An twenty-one at six P M. And I would like to call to order the meeting of the zoning, the public zoning hearing, zoning public hearings, right? Mister clerk?
Yes, sir. Ready for the roll call?
Yes.
The Honorable William Bill Edwards, Mayor.
Here.
Your Honorable Catherine F. Rau, District One. Your Honorable Carmelita Gums, District Two. The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable Naima Gilyard, District Four.
Here.
Your Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Okay, four.
Your Honorable Councilmember Khalid. And the Honorable Mark Baker, District Seven. And I believe.
I'm present.
Councilmember Rau and Councilmember Gums are present?
Yes, I'm present.
All right.
We're both present.
Mister Mayor and members of council, you have a quorum.
Before we go further, I want to take up a little procedural manner, uh, and that is I'm gonna need an a a motion to amend the agenda to include the executive session being that the executive session uh was not held last at our last meeting, our first meeting, but was not included in this meeting. So if I can get a a motion to amend the agenda to include the executive session, please.
I move that we, I move that we amend the agenda to include the executive session for the purposes of personnel litigation and real estate.
Second.
You're properly moved and second in discussion. Hearing none, Mister clerk?
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rau.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
I.
Councilmember Khalid?
I had discussion. I wasn't recognized.
Clerk, are we in, we put, put in a vote?
In a vote, yeah.
We had a vote?
Well, I have, I have a point of order about the vote.
Let's carry the vote out and you can do what you gotta do.
Okay. Councilmember Baker?
Hi. I mean, I'm present.
Uh, that, actually, that was a vote for executive session, uh, to be added to the agenda.
Oh, boy. Okay, I just joined the meeting, uh. Is this a special call meeting?
This is a, this is a zoning, zoning public hearing, Mister Baker.
Oh, okay, um. Is that, is the attorney said that that's okay?
Yes.
Okay, well, sure, hi.
Okay, vote?
Uh, that item was approved, six, zero, one.
Okay, Mister Khalid, you want to make a?
Yes, can, uh, uh, either the attorney or the clerk can, can answer, um. Are we allowed to amend the agenda of an already published special call meeting?
I think where the difference is, Mister Khalid, that the, uh, on the first meeting, there was a there was a executive session. We elected not to have it. And, uh, and elected to put it on as amendment to this meeting, which is held, held basically at the same time. So I don't see where there's a big conflict, but the, but the attorney and the clerk can, uh, can address that issue.
Yes, I, I defer to Mister Hyman. We did discuss it, uh, I defer to Mister Hyman as a proponentarian.
Uh, Councilmember Khalid? As the chair, uh, the mayor's the chair, and it being a, uh, agenda item that, uh, and that the previous session, uh, there was a recommendation for executive session. I says, since, uh, for time constraints or whatever the reason, it wasn't held to be there that this agenda item at the beginning, there could be a vote taken to add executive session to that. Um. And that's what I advised the mayor.
Any other question, Mister Khalid? Okay.
Mayor, I have a question. I have a point of clarification or a point of order as well.
What is your point of order, man?
So I know that, uh, when we made changes on how we're gonna do business, you know, in essence of time and, and trying to be efficient with meetings, we agreed that for, um, zoning cases, we were going to hear the cases on work session days and not make any decisions. We, uh, we were going to just hear the cases, hear the public comments. And then on the regular, on the regular meeting, which will be our next meeting, uh, the cases will be put, uh, placed on that meeting for, uh, yes or no vote. So is that still the procedure, even though this is being considered as a special call meeting? And the other reason we did that, Mayor, I'm asking for a point of clarification. The other reason we agreed to do that, to allow for if, um, there are any changes that needed to be done that, that will allow for the planning, that two-week gap will allow for the planning team to go and make changes or speak with the community or speak with the councilperson of the respective district that the zoning case is being heard in.
Okay, Mister Adams, you wanna, you wanna reply to that?
Yes, uh, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, um. Actually, that was not part of the motion, um, on January when the agenda was set. Um, you may recall that I, I sent the council, the mayor and council a email advising that, uh, that issue, uh, had been brought up and it needed to have some type of resolution. Um, but, but there was no formal action taken by council. Uh, that's a policy decision that is in the breast of the council to, to make, um, and I, and I believe that the city manager as well, uh, I know I discussed it with her as well, but no, no formal decision was made uh, whether or not to hear the, uh, vote on the cases tonight after you hear them.
So, uh, Mayor, I guess my question is, I mean, where do we, cause I know he had at least four of us who agree that that would be the best, uh, that would be the best, uh, that would be in the best interest to handle zoning cases going forward. So do we just handle the zoning cases as we normally do this meeting and then the next regular council meeting, we put something on the agenda to make that change?
Okay, uh, let me, before I go, let me ignite Councilwoman Rau. Go ahead.
Uh, uh, maybe we can just do a poll. I would like to, uh, vote today if possible, if we're hearing the cases. But maybe you can do a, a po- a poll of, of the council and, and, and find out where we, you know, collectively stand.
If both people wanna vote, you vote. I mean, a vote could be taken at any time. I don't know where the four people came from to say they wanted to do the other thing. I don't know.
Right, okay.
No, what we said, Mayor, when we were discussing the changes, we said that we to allow, but we all conferred with our zoning staff as well, and they also recommended that we do this. And what I, what they recommended is that we hear, we hear cases on work session day and we vote on the zoning, on the regular council meeting day. Uh, and that would allow for any changes or any updates to do, be done to the zoning. My question is, since we have not made that change, can we, do we just go ahead and handle the zoning cases as we normally do and go ahead and vote for them today and then make that change? Bring some type of, uh, put that on the agenda for the next regular meeting for us to actually make that change and vote on it?
I think you'll be, I think you're right there. Mister Adams, you don't have any record of a vote, uh, that, that, uh, Miss uh, Miss Willis is talking about, right?
Yeah, yes, I don't, I don't have, where, where, I know I didn't send out a poll. I, I do recall at least two council members who expressed that. Uh, but, but no, no, no formal poll was done on that, that item. Mister Mayor, can we, is it just a motion?
Mister Mayor, can I speak?
Now, hold on. We'll go ahead and handle the item as we usually do, Miss Willis. And then the next, it is a formal request that we do that. And it is a, oh, it's okay by four people, we can continue the future in that, man.
Okay, I'm fine. I'll just bring it to the next, I'll bring that, uh, to the, uh, next regular council meeting for us to, uh, to vote on. I'm fine. Thank you.
Mister Gilyard, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, because I'm almost sure that there are a couple of items that are on there that we really can't vote on and zoning would really need to speak to this because, um, they were go- they're gonna have to make changes, cause there's some changes made that are not in what they're presenting. So they might be on the schedule of what, um, Mayor Pro Tem was talking about in terms of submitting the cases and then the changes later. So we might need to ask zoning if that is the case.
Well, without any evidence showing that four people put that to a motion and voted on it, then we'll have to do the cases as we usually do. And, uh, the clerk says there's no such record of that.
Mayor, Mayor and Councilmember Gilyard, I promised to bring this change back at the next council meeting, so we won't have to go through this again.
Right.
Okay, just, just let me say this real quick. So there, it, there is, there is a zoning case that is on the schedule. The developer has made adjustments to the site plan that are not in what we would be voting on today.
And that's why, that's why you're hearing the zoning. And you can make that observation when that, when that zoning is called.
For the time, yeah.
Okay.
All right, Mister clerk, next item, please.
Yes, the first item on today's zoning, uh, public hearing agenda is annexation request A N twenty-one dash zero zero one.
All right, staff?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, Sir Mayor, may I please ask, um, permission to present these first two items together?
You can.
Thank you, sir.
Both together, go ahead.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll sound, Miss Reed, I'll sound the, uh, second item, which is Z twenty-one dash zero zero one. It's a rezoning request from Fulton County mix to South Fulton mix for the purpose of completing annex, A N twenty-one dash zero zero one annexation request.
And these are companion items. Okay, uh, Miss Reed, go ahead.
Thank you. If I can also just remind council that this will still require two separate votes, though. Okay?
Yes.
So, um, as, as, um, the mayor and clerk mentioned, this is an annexation request for property within unincorporated Fulton County. The property is approximately twelve point eleven acres. The property currently has multifamily development that's currently under, um, construction. And phase one has been completed, phase two is underway. The proposed density for the property will be two hundred and ten residential units. Um, there will be at least one fifty of those units to be occupied by seniors. This property will be accessed by Waycrest Drive. Um, as the green line indicates, you'll see where the unincorporated boundaries outlined and where the city of South Fulton boundaries lie. You'll, um, once the annexation is completed, the entire parcel will, will be in the city limits of South Fulton. Next slide, please. Okay, in regards to annexation, um, the property meets the one hundred percent method of annexation as outlined in OCGA thirty-six, thirty-six twenty. Um, it does have the one eighth aggregate boundary or fifty feet. Uh, the property shares one thousand and twenty-six feet of property, uh, with the city, with the corporate limits of South Fulton. In regards to the process that was taken, um, notice was sent to Fulton County on October thirtieth, twenty twenty. We did not receive any objections on this request. The property tax that's aligned for this property, there are two taxes that will be outlined or, um, received by this annexation should it carry out. As there are two parcels, the first parcel will receive six dollars and seventy-one cent. It's a very small slated piece of land. The second parcel, that's a larger piece, is owned by the housing authority, which will not have any taxes accumulated for this property. As this property is taxed as now. Next slide, please. Okay, for the zoning component, um, as mentioned, twelve eleven acres, multifamily, second phase underway, two hundred and ten residential units. Uh, we are receiving a request to have the property annexed and rezoned um, to have it as mixed use, which is currently the mixed use of zoning that Fulton County has as well. It's almost identical. Next slide, please. As you're seeing on the slide, the gray darkened area is the piece that has already been constructed. The lighter piece that shows phase two is what's currently being constructed now. Next slide, please. Okay, here you're seeing where construction was underway near the Waycrest Drive. Wanted to show you how they would access that site. Next slide, please. Current day, this is what the site looks like with the second phase being built to the rear of this structure. Next slide, please. Staff recommended approval of both the annexation and rezoning. Planning Commission recommended the same approval of both pieces. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the owner here present? I'm open to public hearing. The owner here?
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, yes, this is Edric Harris with Presswood Development Company. And I believe we also have representatives here from the, um, Housing Authority of Fulton County as well. We are present.
Okay, is anything you wanna say? You have ten minutes.
Oh, yes, sir. So, again, thank you all. I think Shayla pretty much communicated, you know, most of the information that was relevant to the annexation and rezoning. We're happy to be a part of the community. And I would say just outside of that, you know, we would prefer to reserve our time unless, I think Patricia's here, the new, uh, executive director from the Housing Authority. Not sure if she or Teresa wants to speak, but I think without that, we could just reserve our time, uh, if needed for rebuttal.
Mister clerk, please reserve that time. Uh, at this time, Mister clerk, would you, uh, happen to read the opposition, please?
Yes, sir.
Mayor?
Yes.
We got, we got an email from some residents saying they are in the inbox, they're in the waiting room to speak and they're not, they're not allowed in. I just don't want anybody who's trying to speak in public hearing to be omitted.
He's part of the developer.
Part of the developer, he says. Okay, Mister clerk, go ahead. Make sure that we don't omit anybody who's in the waiting room. Go ahead, Mister clerk.
Yes, we received a number of, uh, uh, comments from the public. Uh, I would, would like to let the council know that in, in many of these, uh, comments, the cases have been, uh, kinda lumped together. So, um, if I have to read them each, for each case, that's fine. Uh, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that you'll probably hear the same comments for some other cases that are, uh, on the agenda.
I want you to read what's relevant to this case.
Yes. The first, uh, let me set the clock for ten minutes. The first public comment was received from Miss Regina Hill. Uh, she expressed opposition to A N twenty dash zero zero one. I and other homeowners in the community would greatly appreciate your votes of no on issues, on these issues, as well as putting full moratoriums on rezoning building of any kind in the community for a designated period in order for us as a community to be allowed to collaborate on future planning and maintaining of green spaces. Thank you, thanking you in advance. Next is from Kai Burris, who lives on Enon Road in District One. Greetings. It is very important that we do not allow development to come into our city that would decrease the value to anyone's property. Vote no on A N twenty dash zero zero one. Fulton County Housing Authority, multi-family public housing. A second, a prayer for all would be great and not just towards one religion or another. I am all about unity for our community. We all know someone from all walks of life. Third, we have been dealing with blasting with dynamite behind our home on Enon Road. Any kind of blasting in the community, residents should have been, residents should have been made aware. Unfortunately, we did not have any blasting in the community or notification. Our district person, Miss Catherine Rau, was asked to step in to assist. Miss Rau has been very helpful in communicating with the developers and residents in the area who may have concerns. In the future, I ask that any construction being developed and planned could be notified, uh, notify the property owners of our concerns. Uh, next is from Miss Detria Russell, who lives on Cowrich and Lane in District One. She says, greetings. I write today to request and urge that we do not allow development to come into our city that would decrease value to anyone's property. I asked that you vote no on A N twenty dash zero zero one. Um. In my neighborhood, we have a developer building homes below the quality and value of the legacy residents. Instead of matching or increasing home values with their new, with new construction, they are building homes two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars below that of legacy homes. On top of that, we have been dealing with blasting with dynamite in our neighborhood. Any kind of blasting in the community, residents should have been made aware. Unfortunately, we didn't have any notification. Uh, we asked that a seismograph monitor be placed at my home to provide some confidence that the horrific jolting and vibrations and shaking of my home be monitored and tracked. They refuse. I have asked for testing to be provided from the site monitors since the state, they are following all zoning and state regulations. My neighbors have reported our, this issue to our district council person. Miss Catherine was asked to step in to assist and she has been very helpful in communicating with the developers and residents in the area who may have concerns. In the future, I ask communication with the developers and residents in the area and plans, blasting, flooding, prevention, could we be notified so we can properly address our concerns? I am unaware of the damage that being done to my home and want city leadership to prevent any homeowners from being subject to large develop, developer negligence and disregard. Next is Gloria Williams, AKA Gloria Real Estate Lady, who lives on Cole Lane in District Two. As a resident of the city of South Fulton, I ask that the city council not approve the following projects presented in zoning cases. And she lists A N twenty dash zero zero one, vote no. How is this going to draw the kind of commercial development desired by residents as they voiced in the surveys completed in twenty nineteen? From the year two thousand to two thousand eight in what is now the city of South Fulton, there were thirty-nine new home developments with homes priced five hundred thousand dollars and higher. From two thousand eight to, to two, to two thousand twenty-one, in the same areas, there have been sixty-six new home developments priced four hundred thousand dollars and below, and one new home development with homes priced above five hu- five hundred thousand dollars. Of the new sixty-six new home developments, ninety-seven percent are priced between two hundred thousand and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This imbalance of price point is the main reason why many homeowners in our community struggle to get appraisals that do not devalue their homes with opinions of value less than what was paid for the home. We want city council, the mayor, planning and zoning to reconsider placement of or disallow projects that are not supportive of the benefits of residents. Polty, the company that now owns and builds under the John Whelan brand, refuses to build that brand in the city of South Fulton. Instead, Polty is proposing a much lower price and high-density mixed-use development with low-end senior housing component. The city of South Fulton has been, has more vacant land suitable for development than any other metro Atlanta. Land prices in the city of South Fulton are lower than prices in the other areas of Atlanta. Of the projects that are now under construction by D R Horton, Curly Family Homes and Century Communities, what are the price point and how many units are being built? Many home builders in Atlanta have stated that they only build in the Golden Triangle, which consists of an area that stops at I twenty, includes the northwest, north, northeast suburbs, which are not predominantly African-American. These Golden Triangle buildings will offer several arguments for their decision to not build in southwest suburban Atlanta. But their arguments, like public school ratings and lack of demand, are not accurate reflections of the housing market and demand in the city of South Fulton. This discriminatory real estate development will have a generational impact, retarding wealth building and limiting diverse commercial development. In seven to ten years, the homeowners who have purchased the homes priced two hundred thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand will want to capitalize on their equity, sell their homes and buy more expensive homes. For that to happen, they will need to leave the city of South Fulton. Meanwhile, homeowners who originally paid five hundred thousand dollars to eight hundred thousand dollars and want to buy more expensive homes will also have to leave the city of South Fulton. As the economy and the housing market rebound, buildings slowly resumed in metro Atlanta. However, the original and longtime homeowners of homes originally priced five hundred thousand dollars and higher in the city of South Fulton are still struggling to recover and maintain the value of their homes. The neighborhoods are still meticulous and as beautiful as ever. However, the average appreciation value, appreciation rate for beautiful brick homes in the city of South Fulton is negative nine point five percent. A home purchase in two thousand six for five hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred dollars sold in January twenty twenty-one for five hundred and one thousand dollars in the city of South Fulton. By contrast, the average value appreciation rate for comparable brick homes in North Fulton is pl- plus fourteen point two five percent. A home purchase in North Fulton in two thousand three for four hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars sold in August of twenty twenty for six hundred and seventeen dollars. The next uh, call, a next comment, I think I got one hundred, one minute and thirty seconds left, is from Sonya Patterson, who lives on Ha- Haley Circle in District Two. I reside at, on Haley Circle in the Walden Park subdivision in the city of South Fulton. And I am writing to voice my opposition to the following proposed amendments and requests for modification. She lists A N twenty dash zero zero one as one of the cases. City of South Fulton residents deserve more than the continuous barrage of warehouses, barber shops, nail shops and hair salons. We deserve more than the addition of community unit dwellings, and we need to understand more about how these proposed changes will impact our community. I do not believe that your constituents have had sufficient time or information to fully understand these proposals and the consequences that these developments might cause us who live in these surrounding areas. I urge you to vote no on these proposals until we can learn more about how these modifications will positively impact the city of South Fulton. How will these developments improve the quality of life, its home and business, owning, taxpaying and voting residence? I have added numerous meeting, I have attended numerous meetings with other like-minded city of South Fulton residents that feel like our new city is just being land-grabbed by money-hungry developers who most certainly do not have our best interests in mind. We do not want to be overrun by warehouses or nail shops or multi-unit dwellings or newly constructed homes below three hundred thousand dollars. Or wing shops. I wonder if all those who are bringing these cases for amendment would be happy with these same developments being introduced into their community? Uh, Mister Mayor and Council, did you want me to finish? I, I see our time has, uh, concluded.
There is some time for rebuttal based on the, uh, uh, the owner of the property, we wanna give him his, his opportunity to rebuttal. How much time does he have?
At nine thirty. Let me reset the clock.
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes.
I, I just wanna make sure that the community has every opportunity to, to voice their, uh, concerns or their comments. And some residents are saying that they try to come in and speak live um, and, and, and they have that capability and the link expired. And so is there any way we can explain how residents can get in and speak live? And then some of these comments, as Mister Adams And then some of these comments, as Mr. Adams stated earlier, are pertaining to more than one development, I think with so much confusion, it would have been beneficial to allow residents to come in and speak live germane to whatever development that we are speaking about. That's the only way we're going to be able to have a true um, we're going to be able to know what development is opposed and what development is not and hear the true concerns of residents.
Uh, Ms. Willis, you have you heard my first statement to Mr. Adams was that make sure that we that the comments we have now is about this particular zoning, there are other zones coming up. I asked for
Right. But those are comments that were emailed. There are residents that are saying that they were trying to come in live. We have the capability for residents to speak live.
Give me a minute. That was my second point I was going to get to. Uh, Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Would you address that kicking a punt by the council person, please?
Absolutely. Uh, we actually uh, have had the capability for uh, live in Zoom meeting um, participation by the citizens. To to complete that process, uh, citizens uh, are encouraged to go to the city clerk's website. There is a a a page uh, called Public Comment at Council Meetings, and it outlines the process uh, to uh, come into the meeting. Uh, we we did have some parameters in place to kind of uh, not have blind uh, participation. Uh, the process entails uh, filling out the the comment card and indicating that you wish to uh, provide your comment live uh, in the meeting. Um, and I did not receive any of those uh, from the website. I was made aware that uh, there was some type of link, uh, and it appears that it was an old link that was circulated in the community. And of course, that link did not work. Uh, but the link on the website and uh, that was included in the communications uh, was the proper link. Uh, I I do see a couple of people in the waiting room. Um, I have no idea of know who they are. And uh, we had those procedures on the website to make sure that we identify everybody coming into the meeting.
I would suggest you find who's in the waiting room and miss that miss miss Sally Jones.
As a mayor, I
Excuse me, uh, Miss Sally Jones, I would request that uh, that procedure that was outlined by the clerk
Mm hmm.
That it's been that is sent out on all our publications.
Okay.
With our newsletters or what, because people need to understand this, how you do it, okay?
I'm gonna hear. Point of order, Mayor. Point of order.
You don't need a point of order. Get out here from me.
Yes, because our clerk is saying there was erroneous length circulated in the community. And there are several community members out in the chat box. I mean, several of them of them saying that they got that erroneous link and they weren't able to come in and speak live. I mean, I I just don't feel comfortable hearing cases and voting on cases when I don't have the true voices of the community and giving them a fair opportunity to speak. And I just want to say that for the record, is there any way that we can allow these residents to come in and voice their concerns?
Okay, I tell you what I do. Let me let me see the rebuttal from the uh, from the owner of the property, Ms. Willis, and then we'll decide whether we can let some more people in from the community side. Is that okay?
Yes, thank you, sir.
All right, you have uh, you have your time for rebuttal, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm going to ask that uh, maybe Ms. Patricia or Mr. Teresa from the Housing Authority speak. Uh, but first I want to address a couple of the comments. I want to, I think, and I think someone uh, from from the city side can correct me if I'm wrong, the majority of the comments I don't think were directly addressed unless it was specifically addressed as the A N twenty one zero zero one case. Um, and I think as a point of clarification, at least for the existing property, I think this this case is doing two things. Right now, our property is split in half between the county and the city of South Fulton. The current zoning allows us to at least, you know, build the one hundred and fifty units that are on the ground as we speak today. So um, that community, the property, I I think has been owned by the Housing Authority with the intent to deliver uh, the affordable housing uh, units for several years. I want to say dating back, I know prior to two thousand and seven, as this development was started, uh, you know, prior to the recession. So, um, again, I think as we're proceeding, we're hoping to to basically come into the city and really clean up so we have one point of contact. As right now, we're having to kind of serve two different groups with similar rules and requirements. But we are coming in to um, to kind of clean up who we report to for this property. Uh, and from there, um, Patricia or Teresa, if you all uh, may want to speak on some of the other items, if you don't mind.
Uh, this is Teresa Davis. I'm uh, the Chief Mortgage Officer with the Housing Authority of Fulton County. And um, I I'm not sure how much I would have to add to the uh, comment that Mr. Harris has made, other than the two phases of uh, that are currently, one that's been completed and one that's underway is for senior housing uh, of sixty two and older. And then the third phase will be multifamily. Uh, Patricia, are you on? Would you like to add something to that?
I would not. You all have clarified everything that I would add.
Okay. All right, let me do. Thank you so much, both you ladies. Uh, because I see a lot of uh, confusion going on, Mr. Clerk, uh, I'm going, I'm going to do additional ten minutes for those people uh, who have not had an opportunity to address this issue. So I'm gonna give an additional ten minutes because of the confusion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think we need to clarify. Um, currently, there is no one in the waiting room for our meeting. I I I I received a comment from uh, Mayor Pro Chen Willis. I think the the people wanting to speak are on the YouTube side.
Oh, okay.
So that would entail uh, maybe someone in communications providing uh, the Zoom link. Uh, um, but currently there's, there's uh, only one person in the waiting room in the Zoom meeting.
Mayor, what needs to happen, if you don't mind me explaining, what needs to happen is the communications team need to put the Zoom link out in the chat because there are people in the chat saying that they got that erroneous link. And as a result of them getting a erroneous link, they were not able to get in and speak.
I got you.
And so because, okay, so if communications can put the link out there, then people can come in and speak. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna
Mayor, I I also want to take a point of order. Um, there are so many, they need to use our website um, in fairness to the staff um, who are managing this process. You have um, residents in the community that are putting out information and it's causing more confusion and they're not being recorded. That's the issue. We need to direct everybody going forward to the city's website to sign up so that they can really track that going forward.
All right. Well, I'm gonna close the public hearing, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I I I don't see the link out here in the chat. Who, I mean, communicate, we had a communication person that was putting information out in the chat. So can somebody from communication put the link out in the chat?
I have closed the public hearing, Mr. Clerk.
You said you were going to allow people to call call in and speak, man.
I was gonna do that, Ms. Willis, but when she started talking about some uh, other mechanism they're coming in on, I don't have time to wait on that. I mean, I don't have a problem with people speaking. I really don't. If there's, if it, Cory, do you have anyone now based on the new link? Do you have anyone now?
The link has not been put out in the chat. The link has not been put out in the chat, Mayor. I keep asking.
Mr. Leftwich? Mr. Leftwich?
Mayor Edwards, I'll follow. I'll follow up with Mr. Leftwich and see if we can get the the link put out. Cory, can you tell us what that link is again?
Uh, I can, yes.
Okay, and I actually have a recommendation based on what I heard and some of the confusion for this particular case.
Okay.
Yeah, the meeting ID for for the meeting ID for the Zoom uh, meeting is nine seven six two one three six seven nine two eight. And the pass code is eight nine zero nine eight five. And I just ask that you identify yourself by putting your first and last name uh, once you come in so that we know who we're talking to.
All right. Ms. Ral, you are on the queue.
Um, yes, for this particular case, A N uh, two one zero zero one. Um, I rec, I recommend that we deal with the senior housing component only, oh, actually on both cases. Because that's the only ones that we we've discussed up to this date um, and and been made aware of. I think we need to have some follow up um, conversations, but um, I think that will address the reporting between two jurisdictions, which um, as you know, our planning department has basically overseen the construction and management of all aspects um, through the I G A with the county. But I only feel comfortable moving forward on the senior housing piece.
Which is what piece? Is that uh, Z twenty one zero zero one?
Uh, I I want to make sure I stated correctly. I I think it's two different case numbers. Um, it's A N two zero zero one, which deals with the annexation. Um, I just asked that at this time, you um, limited the language to the senior housing and and removed the multifamily.
When you say remove the multifamily, you trying, you trying to uh, for this, for the purpose of this meeting, you want to move the multifamily?
Well, that that's my recommendation.
Okay, well, let me, let me go back to the uh, owners of the of the property. You want to defer it? Is that what you're doing?
Well, let them respond. It might result in a deferral, but I
That's what I want to know.
No, I'm I'm okay with moving forward, but I want to see if they if they're okay, because that's my recommendation.
Okay, uh, were the owners of the property, are you there?
Yes, uh, Teresa and Patricia, I'd have to defer to you all on that particular component. Because I guess one of the questions I would have is how do we come back to continue the discussion on that piece if it's pulled out tonight?
It would have to go back to this process.
Okay. All right, well, I will have to
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Reed. I mean, you're the director.
Yes, so if I may join in, it's important to note that the annexation, uh, when this annexation process went to Fulton County, we informed them that our zoning would be identical to theirs. So one portion of annexation as a requirement is that there must not be any changes to the zoning for twelve months. With that said, we, with the annexation taking place, we have to mirror that annexation as well as the zoning um, to allow for whatever to continue. Whatever was in Fulton County's packet for development. We don't have the option as we normally would if it was already in the city limits. The city in the county agreement for annexation basically is limited to making changes to zoning.
Um, so so um, and the the current allow for senior housing, right? But it it could be something more, right? So if we approved the zoning designation, we could deal with the zoning case in Z twenty one zero zero one, is that correct?
So right now, the property will be zoned mixed. It doesn't speak particularly on senior housing necessarily. It's only speaking on the mixed zoning. So we didn't specify in divided like that to say senior. However, um, if, because there the the current development that's under construction right now, um, once that year passes, we can definitely come back in and have a discussion as to how you wish to outline the additional phase. But there's a third phase and we can have that discussion um, at that time. But right now, for the for the purpose of tonight's decision, uh, it will be mixed zoning that allows for senior multifamily, anything, because it's, well, not anything, but anything residential under that classification.
What does the property owner want to do? Do you want to defer one of these or you want to keep going as we are?
Uh, I'm 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 trying to, uh, Mayor, with all due respect, I'm just trying, I I want to be clear. So it seems like we can do A N twenty one with the zoning. But the second case, that's what I'm asking, Ms. Reed, is Z twenty one zero zero one, the approval is is relative to the two projects that uh, the two phases which are senior housing. Is that correct?
So yes and no. You have to have annexation with a zoning. You can't annex without zoning it. Okay. So you have to have a second case, right?
Right. But I'm saying, um, if we if we deal with that, we're only dealing with the approval right now on Z twenty one, which is senior. Or or you're saying that once we pass that, it's open to either. Is that what you're saying?
Residential classifications under mix.
Okay.
Okay, so in 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 fairness, uh, I'm going to reopen uh, the public hearing. As I understand that we have about seven people. Mr. Clerk, are you aware of those people?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reopen the public hearing for an additional ten minutes so those people can be heard.
Okay.
Okay, we'll let them in uh, uh, one by one here.
Okay.
First person is gonna be first person is gonna be Ms. Brittany Hershey. Ms. Hershey? Ms. Hershey?
Go on to the next.
Next will be Mr. Derek Solomon. Mr. Solomon, can you hear me?
Is there some kind of technical difficulty that we're having with that?
Yeah, I show him in the meeting. Uh, I'll go to the third person.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, there's there's Mr. uh, Solomon.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. Solomon, go right ahead.
Mrs. Solomon went back on mute. Can you unmute him? Uh, Mr. Solomon, you gotta unmute yourself.
No, I didn't have a question about the, um, I didn't have a a issue. I was just joining the meeting. I didn't have a issue, though.
Okay, all right. The next person, thank you, Mr. Solomon. Next person, Ms. Bird.
Ms. Gloria Williams?
Uh, yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Next person, Ms. Bird. Gloria Williams?
Yes, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Adams, uh, Mayor Edwards.
Yes, thank you so much.
And city council members and my fellow residents.
Ms. 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 Williams, you need to, you need to uh, pause your YouTube show showing, because it's giving us um, feedback.
Okay.
Okay, hold on.
There you go.
Okay, there you go. We hear you loud and clear.
Okay, wait a minute. I've got to get back to YouTube. Oh, well, so you can hear me, right?
Yes.
We hear you.
Okay, great. Okay, so I want to thank you so much for the opportunity to address the council and the mayor um, and my fellow residents. Um, the biggest question I have about this project is how does this benefit the city of South Fulton? I've heard how it benefits Fulton County. And the reason given, if unless I misunderstood or missed something, is that it basically streamlines their reporting process, streamlines their processes. Meanwhile, we are not getting maximum tax benefit from this project. I don't disagree that we do need more uh, housing for seniors, but we need the right kind of housing and we need to take a bit more time in determining what the options are. Um, there are other types of senior housing that desperately are needed and that would probably make more sense in that area because that area is not that convenient to shopping and other services that senior needs. So you would need to, I think, build something that would require a little bit more income from seniors, seniors who are driving, uh, more active adult independent living accommodations would be more appropriate for that site if you wanted to focus on senior housing for that site. But to do it just for the benefit of Fulton County, uh, who's had it for some time and not acted on it previously, um, I'm not in agreement with. As a taxpayer, that does not appeal to me.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you so much. Next person.
Gina Lewis, are you available? Teresa Bue.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Um, I just wanted to step in here and um, also state that I echo many of the same sentiments of Miss Mrs. Gloria Williams. Um, I just wanted to step in here and, um, also state that I echo many of the same sentiments of Ms. Mrs. Gloria Williams. I'm all for creating more housing, whether that be senior housing or, um, allowing developments for houses that are in the three hundred thousand and up range. But I also think there needs to be moratoriums on warehouses and there need to be more efforts and maybe even creating business, um, programs that help promote, uh, small businesses to come in the area or to court some of these other businesses that offer, um, healthy casual dining, recreational activity, shopping, um, maybe even getting shopping plazas that have anchor stores like a Target or something, because our tax dollars seem to always be leaving and going to other cities in the surrounding areas that have the things that the residents of South Fulton need, but we don't have in South Fulton. So that's all I want to, um, allow to say.
Thank you so much for staying with us in your comments.
Thank you.
Next person?
Uh, I think I see two people. Uh, is there a summer?
How many minutes do we have?
Um, I'm here. I am, I am representing, um, Proterra for the Butler Estates Development. So I'm, I'm not in opposition.
And the last person I show is a Ace Daily. Uh, I don't know if he's connected or not. Uh, I believe that completes the list that I had here.
Okay. And as a result of being, being fair to the citizen, I have.
And Sonia Patterson as well, Mayor, that has a comment. She has joined the meeting.
This will be the last comment. Ms. Patterson, are you there?
I am. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the moment, um, the time and opportunity, Honorable Mayor Edwards, all the, um, um, council people. Um, I am a resident of District Two. And I just wanted to say that I wanted us to not rush through this. It sounds like it's a very administrative process. And it's just yes, no, hit the gavel and kind of move on. And I think that some of these things, you know, for whatever reason, due to lack of, of communication, due to, um, you know, links that aren't working, miscommunication being presented, we just don't have the information. I think that we would feel comfortable with before making a decision, um, of this magnitude. Um, I agree that we need to have housing and solutions for our seniors, but, um, I think there was an annex made to reduce the age, um, of that, of that intended, um, facility. And that opens the door to a different, um, possibly a different, um, segment of, of people. Um, and that's something that we should understand before we say yes to that as well. These businesses that are being opened are not the level of business that those of us who are in this area, who are constituents of this area, who are taxpaying, um, business owners and homeowners want to see. We want to see developments like it's in the Pavilion, uh, in Fayetteville. We want to see areas of development like that's on Chapel Hill Road in Douglasville. And we want to see areas of development like on, uh, Cobb Parkway in Smyrna. We don't want this to be another extension of other neighborhoods that are around us that don't have the growth that we want for our value. We want to improve our schools. So we're just asking, maybe can we just take some time instead of just trying to rush through this administrative process to give us more time to get more information so we can provide support and understanding to others, our neighbors, so that we can be as a community moving forward with the same mission and vision that we had for City of South Fulton. So I'm asking that you oppose, if you have to make a vote, we're asking that you oppose these, um, annexations and proposals that are being set today at, to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I thank in fairness to the applicant, Mr. Uh, Clerk, I will allow him a three-minute rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go brief, um, just two quick, two or three quick points of clarification. You know, this community is sixty-two and older, but it is for active adults. Our income average is about fifty thousand dollars per household. So, you know, these are active adults with incomes to support the publics down the street. The other, uh, retail and commercial nodes that are in the area. Um, another comment that came out, this phase and the current phase that we have under construction, right now, we have a hundred and fifty units under construction and they all have a land use restrictive covenant with the state of Georgia, with the Department of Community Affairs, that these have to be affordable and for seniors. Uh, the last comment is, as press, we are also building the exact same product on Cobb Parkway at, uh, near the, I guess it's the South Marietta Parkway and Cobb Parkway intersection. And we have one in Smyrna right off of Concord Road. So I think some of the nodes that was listed as exemplary communities, we're in those communities as well, building the exact same product. Uh, but with that though, we would, um, recognize and, and be willing to accept or request a deferral uh, to the next council meeting to have further discussions of, with the, um, mayor and council and, and staff.
All right. I will, I will, uh, close the public hearing. Uh, Mr. Khalid, you've been in queue a minute.
Uh, uh, out of respect for Dr. Ralph, whose district this is in, since this has been postponed, I will just follow up with my.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I will accept, um, the recommendation to defer, but, um, uh, one of the things I recognize, a number of these people are making comments actually live in District Two. And I would tell you, um, there has been a great effort working with the commercial development that's right up the street to bring some of those options, everything from Arden Gardens to Salad Bar Place to the expanded options, um, at your public store. So we understand and development takes time. I thank, um, uh, Mr. Harris for, uh, providing that clarification. So this is not just an administrative thing that just happened, but for the benefit of the public, I do recommend that we defer. And I'm looking forward to, um, having further conversation. Um, I'm not concerned about the senior housing. It's already, um, up and operated anyway. Um, but I do want to have further conversations about any future plans.
Second.
The property moved to second discussion. I see Ms. Willis in the queue.
So I, I just want us to not, um, you know, insult residents when, when we talk about what districts they live in. I mean, development overall, um, impacts this overall city. And, um, whether you live in one, two, three, four, five, six, your voices deserve to be heard, because it impacts the overall city. I do respect Councilmember Ralph and I do respect her, you know, working directly with her constituents. But, you know.
I, I don't think he meant it like that. I just.
I have the floor. I do have the floor. I do have the floor. Um, I just think that we just need to be careful. Um, you know, everybody's opinions need to be respected. Everybody should be heard. And I'm not saying anybody meant anything like anyone. I'm just saying that it does not matter what district a person lives in. Uh, if someone has an issue with what's coming in this city, then their opinion should be respected and heard, period. And, um, Councilmember Ralph, I'm not slighting you. I'm not slighting your communication with your residents, but this is why I recommended from the beginning to let's just hear the cases and then bring it back to the regular council meeting to vote on it. Thank you.
Okay. This is about zoning. Let's keep it to zoning and, and Mr. Khalid, uh, you're next and then we're going to call for a vote.
Okay. And this, and this is actually just a point of information that I forgot to, um, add, because I heard some people comment, I heard a comment during the public comment about the, the age being lowered from sixty-two to fifty-five, but that's actually for an upcoming case. I know that, uh, the zoning cases were a little confusing. There are two senior developments that are being, um, discussed. And so I, the second one is in District Two and that one has an age lowering requirement. So people who spoke just now may have meant to be heard in the next case, the next set of cases.
Right.
Well, let me just say this. Uh, I'm glad that we had an opportunity for everybody who wished to speak to get a chance to speak, because that's very important. Now, uh, the motion on the floor, would you repeat the motion, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, there's current motion on the floor, uh, motion by Councilmember Ralph, seconded by Councilman Baker to defer, uh, A N twenty-one dash zero, zero, one.
Let's vote, please.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ralph?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Voting to defer this, is that what this is?
That's correct.
Yes. Yes, on voting to defer.
Okay. Councilmember Gilyard?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid?
I'm sorry, yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
That item was approved unanimously to defer.
Next item.
Will we need a motion regarding Z twenty-one dash zero, zero, one, the companion zoning piece?
Absolutely. Mrs. Uh, Ralph, do you have anything?
I make a motion to, uh, to defer the second item.
Second.
Z twenty-one dash zero, zero, one.
Right. Property moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, let's vote, please.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ralph?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
I'm sorry, that was on mute. Aye.
Councilmember Khalid?
I couldn't hear you, Mr. Khalid.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Motion was approved unanimously to defer.
Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is item three, Z twenty dash zero, zero, eight. So council consideration of a rezoning from AG one to C U P for the purpose of developing a residential subdivision.
Staff?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Um, in the interest of saving time, I will make note that Z twenty, zero, zero, eight, Z twenty, zero, zero, nine, and C V twenty, zero, zero, one are all for the same proposal, the same project. Um, the petitioner has asked for a deferral to the next, to next month's zoning hearing for all three of these cases. And these are the cases that Councilmember Gilyard was referencing, uh, when it was stated that there are updated proposals, updated plans that are not in the presentation we have for you tonight. I will also add that we do have another meeting scheduled this week with the petitioner to discuss additional changes and more updates to the proposal. Um, and so if council would, um, rather make a motion to accept the deferral, I will not run through all three of these unless that is the desire of the, of the body.
All right. Uh, thank you so much. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is the, uh, is the owner of the property applicant there? Is she?
Yes.
Do you, do you agree?
Yes, Mayor Edwards. And we do ask for the deferral. We've made some significant changes to the plans and we will be presenting those to the community on February twenty-fourth at a Zoom meeting.
That'd be good. Uh, Mr. Clerk, what do we have in opposition? I have, I have to allow the opposition to speak, even though it's deferred.
Yes, we, um, as I stated originally, uh, we had several emails, many of the same emails, um, uh, regarding these three items, uh, that I read previously. Um, I, I, we also have, I believe, I believe we have some folks in the Zoom meeting that may wish to speak. Um, Mrs. Mrs. Gloria Williams?
Mrs. Williams, go ahead. Mrs. Williams?
I'm here. I'm here. I'm here. Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, first off, let me say that the links on the website do not work, period.
Okay.
Too difficult. And case in point tonight, there was no Zoom link. There was reference to meeting on, to speaking live on Zoom, but there was no link until tonight.
Well, I'll, we'll take care of all of that by next meeting.
I hope so. Thank you. And regarding these cases, again, um, just as was stated in my previous comment, we need more housing that complements, complements the property values of original homeowners. We have an oversaturation of housing in one price point, two hundred thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars next to homes where some of the homeowners paid eight hundred thousand dollars for their homes originally. Now, when the buyers of the two hundred to three hundred thousand dollar homes get ready to sell their homes to move up, to capitalize on their equity, to buy bigger, more expensive homes, different homes for their families, for their lifestyle, where are they going to go? They're going to have to leave the area. Their incomes will have increased. That's why they're going to be moving up. They're going to take that money and move to Douglas, Cobb, Fayette County, because we don't have the diversity in price point, the diversity in housing style, the diversity in quality that is needed to keep, uh, the, the, uh, higher income, um, achieving homeowners and also to attract new homeowners. By the same token, the existing original homeowners who purchased their properties prior to two thousand eight, when they get ready to sell to, again, take advantage of equity and to buy a different home, mostly more expensive home, where are they going to go? They leave the area. So with what has already been built, what's currently coming out of the ground on De Mooney Road and in other locations, that is oversaturating this area with one price point. Not saying that these developments are so horrible, no. It's the location that is not beneficial to existing homeowners. And that's been our problem. And as far as more senior housing, again, there needs to be more due diligence on what type of senior housing. What has been presented with these current developments is not the type of senior housing that would attract the seniors who, number one, currently live in the area. Number two, who would be interested in moving to the area necessarily. There are many other examples of excellent senior communities, better quality, more expensive, but still much more in demand and would do well in our area because of the location.
Yeah.
And again, the developers build those products in other areas.
Uh, thank you so much. I would ask those who are speaking, we have, uh, four items that are up for a deferral, that we speak to those items, uh, as we have already deferred to prior. So who's the next?
Looks like Mrs. Sonia Patterson?
Thank you. Um, can you all hear me? Yeah. So, um, my comments also are with regard to the housing and the price points of the homes that are being built. Um, I am, um, from a different state. I come from New York. Um, you would never find homes that are the size of the standard, um, you know, prior to two thousand and eight building frenzy. Um, homes with, you know, three side brick, two car garage, five bedroom, four bath homes being priced the way that they're priced here. Um, and I know the market in Atlanta is different, but, um, I've been a homeowner since two thousand and two and I agree with what, uh, Gloria Williams was saying. Um, these, these homes are not, um, accruing the way that they should be. And so we have to be responsible about that. And as a homeowner, I'm going to be very concerned about homes that are being built, you know, at two, starting at two hundred thousand dollars. There's no, I understand we need to have affordable housing in our communities, but remember, guys, this area is centrally located. We are near the airport. We are near two eighty-five, eighty-five, twenty. We are in Fulton County, the city in which the, the, uh, the capital of this, the state, you know, resides. This is a prime location. I know there's a lot of stuff that's supposed to be happening with, uh, South Fulton Parkway. We are primed to be that second buckhead of City of South Fulton. And I want to see us be able to do that in our areas. It is not going to work for us if we keep saturating with the same, you know, three bedroom, two baths. That, that's not this area. There's other areas outside of this area and market to that price point and do very well. Um, but we want to see as homeowners in this area, more value increasing properties. We want that. That's the vision that we have for City of South Fulton. We want this city to be something that people come to and are driven to. And the way that the planning has been happening, you're driving people away. So please be considerate of that and allow us to engage with you more directly with better communication channels due to this COVID limitation, so that we can tell you what we're thinking and what we're feeling. And then we will feel more invested in this process and then we'll be able to have more of us getting more involved and then staying and growing with our community.
And thank you so much. We really appreciate that. How much time do we have, Governor Spur?
Four minutes and twenty-eight seconds.
Okay. Call the next person, please.
I do not show anyone else, uh.
Don't you have?
Is there someone?
Do you have any written comments on these particular items?
Well, like I said, I have the the same ones I just read. They included all all three cases.
Okay, good, good. So at that time, I will unless the unless the applicant wants to have a rebuttal, but you've already made a motion, so we're fine, right?
I would like to make one point to the community. We have worked very hard to hear the comments that we have received from them. One of the major changes that we have made is that the senior community will now all be cottage homes. We have taken out all the other diversity of product that we were proposing. The price points on those have risen, but we want to make it clear that these are intended for seniors that are fifty-five and older. And we are excited about the product. We have modified the product and we will be showing that at the meeting on the twenty-fourth as well as for the CUP component of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Clerk, would you sound the motion again, please?
I didn't catch a motion. The staff just announced that their recommendation was deferral, but I didn't get a council member who recommended.
So Mayor, being that this is my area, I would like to, I will accept the deferral, but I would like to add that I would like it instead of being thirty days for it to be sixty days. I have heard the complaints from the residents, and I do believe that there is time that we need to take in addressing this. I will be hosting my own meeting and inviting the developer to give it an even feel where residents will feel comfortable and be able to talk about what they would like to see. So again, my recommendation is that we do accept the deferral, but I would like to have it for sixty days.
There a second?
Second.
The property moved the second, any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Roll call vote to defer Z twenty dash zero zero eight for sixty days. Motion by councilmember Gomes, second by councilmember Raoul. Councilmember Raoul.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Hi.
That item is deferred for sixty days.
Okay, next item, please.
Mr. Clerk, this is this is Nathan. Could we get the same motion for Z twenty oh nine and CV twenty oh one? They are all for the same project.
Yes, my understanding they have to do them separately.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I like to make a motion to defer. Is this the Z twenty zero zero eight dash zero zero eight?
Zero zero nine.
Zero zero nine. For sixty days. May I have a second?
Second, second.
Wait a minute now, we just made a vote.
He said we had to do them individually.
It's three items, Mayor.
It's three of them.
Yeah, we defer Z twenty zero zero eight.
Go ahead. Property moved the second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Roll call vote, councilmember Raoul.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Hi.
That item is deferred for sixty days.
And then I need to defer?
Yes.
Well, go ahead.
That's item C, CV twenty dash zero zero one.
Okay.
I like I like to make a motion to defer that one also for sixty days.
Second.
Property moved the second, any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Raoul.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Hi.
That item is deferred for sixty days.
Okay, next item.
Next item is a use permit, U twenty dash zero zero three. Council to consider a use permit at twenty-nine Camelton Road for a nail salon to relocate to the new Public Shopping Center.
Yes, I'm here. I wait for the PowerPoint to catch up. Yeah, you can go ahead and go to the next slide, please. Again, this case is for a special use permit, fifty-eight twenty-nine Camelton Road in the new Public Shopping Center. It is for a new permanent business license for an existing business. The business is a nail salon, and it will effectively be moving across the parking lot to this new spot. This use type is one of the types that was added to the list that is requiring a use permit in our new zoning. So I would just tell council to be ready to see a much higher occurrence of use permits in your zoning cases going forward. Staff recommendation here is for approval, and the planning commission recommendation is also for approval. Go to the next slide, please. This is just a layout. I'm sorry. Here's the aerial map, and you see the aerial map legs a little bit behind what is actually on the ground because you know that Publix is up and running. And you can see the zoning on the site. There's all C one on the corner. We'll go to the next slide. This is just the layout of the proposed new nail salon. It will obviously meet all building requirements as they outfit the interior of the space. And the shopping center does meet all parking requirements as well. And I believe that is the last slide of this. Yes, that concludes the staff report.
Okay, are the, is the applicant here? I'm open to public hearing.
Yes, I am, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you again for your time today. As you know, that we have been in the community for the past eight, nine years, almost nine years to this, to the two thousand twenty-one. We just want to expand our business to double our business and to provide a better service to the community. And also with this COVID virus going on, with the bigger space, we can have spread out the customer more. And every everything in the shop will be brand new. Every, we have liner for every pedicure. We have glasses between the customer, and we have a sheer protection between in front of a customer and the methamphetamines. So they will not be spreading any germ.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, you have some comments from the public?
Yes, I have at least two. I'm going to read the first one and then I'll bring in Ms. Patterson for the second comment. Okay, the first written comment is from Mrs. Tunine Chisholm, who lives in Le Jardin Boulevard, District Four. Respectfully, I ask that the use permit for a nail salon in the new Publix Plaza be denied. We do not need yet another nail salon, beauty supply store, liquor store, or things of that kind. Let's take this opportunity of the new Publix Plaza to create space for things we do not already have enough of in the area like non-chain restaurants and health-oriented businesses. And then we have a comment from Mrs. Patterson.
Miss Patterson, ready? Yes, I'm here. I agree with the person who just whose comment was read. I actually have been a customer of this business. Emily's Nails, I believe, is the name of it. And I think we need to have that business owner address some of their customer service issues before they think about expanding. You can go on nextdoor.com and see tons of discussions about many people who are really fed up of the lack of respect that they receive from the business, the people that work in that business. So I think I would be a little bit more in support of it if it was a business that respected the people that live in the culture that it's trying to be a part of. So I would also have to say I would not be interested in it. I think they should, we should have that place at the Publix, which is a wonderful opportunity, is primed to be a wonderful opportunity for other businesses that can come in and let the nail place stay where it's at and let some someone else, you know, be able to have a business opportunity for something new for City of South Fulton, which does not need another nail salon. Thank you, in my opinion, respectfully.
Thank you so much. Who's next, Mr. Clerk?
Mrs. Williams.
Mrs. Williams, come on.
Okay, so I so heartily agree with Ms. Patterson and Ms. Chisholm. And I ask, how many nail salons are located within, I'll even give it a ten mile radius of this location? And will the owner keep their existing shop open? And again, I so heartily agree with the previous comments. There's you, an oversaturation of nail salons in the area. I don't frequent them personally, but again, I just don't think that that's something that's going to add to the commercial growth and economic development of the area.
Okay, any further comments, Mr. Clerk?
Not that I'm aware of.
Advocate, you have an opportunity to rebuttal if you'd like.
Yes, sir. So as for your question, we will close our existing business. We moving to the new place. So the new one, the old business will return, well, the old place will be returned to the landlord. And I think he has somebody looking into it. With the new business, we are changing our culture. We're going to have a bringing in a new manager who is have a spirit running business for a long time. So he will express all that concern, and we will be serving the community better. We love to be in South Fulton. Like we are saying, we have been there for almost nine years now, and we wish to be there for many law, for many more years.
Okay, thank you so much, sir. At this time, I'm going to close public hearing. Who's the, what district is this?
Uh, one.
Okay, got the formers, Raoul.
I move to approve U twenty dash zero zero three, five eight two nine, Camelton Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move the second discussion. I see Mr. Ms. Willis, you're in the queue, and Mr. Khalid.
So I have a couple of questions. The, I don't, what's his name? The nail salon in the current location is moving to a location for bigger purposes, so for more space. And so my question from a legal standpoint, you know, zoning is all about legality. Do we have the, we don't have, do we, do we have the capability to ask somebody legal to the, not somebody to not to not somebody business when it's on for commercial because we don't care for their customer service?
Nope.
Mr. Mr. Hyman, you want to address that?
Would you preface the question, Mayor, please?
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tim, I'm not mayor. Okay, that's okay. So so this business, the the commercial plaza is on for a commercial, is on for a commercial. This is a commercial business asking for us to approve zoning for a relocation. And do we have a legal ground to deny this zoning request because they provide bad customer service?
I would leave that to Ms. Reed as a, but I don't think customer service would in and of itself be sufficient. But I would also like to be able to look at more into the zoning, underlying zoning before just rendering the ultimate conclusion on that.
Okay, Ms. Reed, do you have the, I mean, I know you are familiar with our zoning code. I know you're familiar with, you know, do we have a legal standing to deny somebody because they provide bad customer service? Want something to zone for for a commercial?
So I can only speak on the zoning perspective and not the legal perspective. So the zoning case before you is requesting a particular use. So if that use is within the, I guess, within that classification, you can decide decide from that point if you would like to move forward based on what the zoning classification allows. So I I can't give you that answer on the legal side. I can only speak on the zoning case.
Okay, so let me ask this question. What is the zoning classification?
It's currently on for commercial use at this time.
And so this, and so the tenant is requesting to use, is requesting for business for commercial use, right?
That's correct.
And so what, I mean, what grounds do we have to deny a case? Because what I don't want to do is deny something, and then we turn around and get sued for denying something we didn't have a right to deny. And then, you know, the county, I mean, the city, not the county, the city ends up paying legal fees for 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 personal reasons. And I hope the 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 business owner hears the complaint about customer service, and he does something about it and and, you know, treat the community better. But I just, we don't have any from from hearing from our attorney and hearing from our CRA director, we have no legal ground to deny this based on the customer service that, you know, that is given. But what we do have, we do have a right to do if they're providing bad customer service is not patronize them.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Khalid, go ahead.
Okay. I don't, I don't like saying, I actually am uncomfortable saying, saying certain things. I don't want people to think that I get any sort of charade from bringing these issues up, but I don't think that it's advisable in our zoning hearings to be notifying potential potential applicants on ways that they might sue us in the future. I don't think that we are, we are taking the city's best interest at heart by doing that publicly. We have other methods of communication that don't necessarily require us to do that. With that being said, this, to go back to Mr. Lombardo's point, we will, we will be hearing many cases like this in the future. This is part of the enshrinement of what began as a zoning moratorium that I wrote with the help of our CDRA Director Shayla Reed to limit like uses. And so like I just included that in the chat, that original, that original moratorium that limits like uses. And the question I want to ask is about that. So there is, there is a legal ground that we have to limit new businesses that are of similar or like uses to other businesses where we have an oversaturation of those businesses.
You're right.
And there are multiple cities that have these provisions. And so I understand Mr. Hyman is is new. If 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 Ms. Walker is here who helped write both the moratorium and this section of the zoning code, I would like to address this question to her, and that is if we approve this zoning, if we approve this, if we approve this use, that would allow this business that already exists in the neighborhood to move across the street. Does it also then allow the owner of the current location to bring in a nail business in the old location? So now we would go from having two, from having one nail shop in a in a in a spot to two nail shops in the same block, which would actually be a thing that this provision was written to prevent. Is there any sort of property interest or, you know, because because this, because a nail shop was here before, and this person is moving across the street, can the owner of the current location assert that I should be able to? Are we, are we in approving this move, approving two shops? Or are, or will, if this shop moves across the street and a nail shop goes into the old place, will they come before council as well, or will they be granted? will they come before council as well, or will they be grandfathered in? Do you understand my question?
I think I hear I hear what you're saying, Mr. Khalid, but I want you to know. Uh, this is that existing business. I'm not advocating for or against it.
Right.
Uh, and it can go, it can go over there. Now, once he leaves the existing shopping center, they're bound by uh the more term that we already have in place. Okay?
That's that's just what I wanted to hear from our, from our city attorney who wrote that. If if that's, I just want to make sure.
Well, it's pretty clear. I mean, I don't need her in here. It's clear, you know.
I'm at, I'm asking.
It's no longer our city attorney.
Don't, don't do that. Don't do that. I'm saying that the legislation is pretty clear. If there's any other clarity to be gone on, Mr. Hyman will give that clarity.
I I I I am asking, I don't know if I need to call for a vote, Mayor, but I'm asking for the city attorney who drafted this documentation, unless Mr. Hyman feels comfortable, or if he feels comfortable speaking on it, then go ahead. But it sounded like he didn't. And that's why I was asking for the attorney who drafted.
Well, let's let's ask Mr. Hyman, let's ask Mr. Hyman because he is the city.
Ms. Reed. It's a one mile radius. The zoning ordinance we pass, you cannot put it in place within a one mile radius. This business has already been operating for nine years. And if anybody knows, it is frequented frequented regularly.
So what I gather is that, no, the answer to your question is that new, the old people cannot come in and put another uh
Correct.
in that business.
They cannot, it's right.
I hear, I'm hearing from a lot of people that aren't lawyers. I'm just asking to hear from our city.
It's in our zoning ordinance, I promise you. And and we, it will have to come back before us anyway. It would have to.
Miss, Miss, hold up. Mrs. Uh, uh, Reed, Reed, are you there? Ms. Reed, are you? Ms. Reed, Shayla Reed?
I'm present.
Okay, answer that question, please.
In regards to the use, this location is relocating to the same plaza. It's moving this, the less than a quarter of a of a mile from where it's going. So it's not going to make much difference in the location. A location is not an issue at this time. Because once they relocate, that business will no longer be there.
And so what happens to these businesses that he that they left?
You're asking if another business can come in, right?
Yes.
So so no, if you want to come in and have where a business is coming, our code does not specify the distance requirement particularly on that as it does with group homes. Um, but you can restrict that should you move forward. You can restrict for the personal care services of that location moving forward, but next bit.
But Ms. Ms. Reed, I'm asking, this is, you've already have, we already have something in place uh that that says that you cannot have these type businesses in the future. This this particular business is here now. I'm not advocating for them. I'm just trying to get Mr. Mr. Khalid to understand that once she moves out of that over to the new place, then we
They're no longer there, yes, right. They're no longer there, correct. They're no longer there.
Right. Okay.
And Mr. Pearlman has put in the chat, who is the property owner who has been leasing these space that this nail salon's old space will be renovated and leased to a different type of business.
Ms. Ral, you are now in the queue. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm in queue too, but okay.
I got you. Ms. Ral, go ahead.
I was just saying, Mr. Pearlman has addressed it, who is the owner of the property, who has been leasing these, leasing this, and like he said, this has been his tenant for nine years.
Okay. All right, Ms. Willis?
And so the app, I got a problem because the applicant came out and said, I mean, he came on here and said he's relocating the business to get a larger space and he would be closing his old space. So he made it clear that he's not opening two nail salons. He's relocating. I also think it's disrespectful to be calling on someone that's no longer our city attorney. It's disrespectful to our current city attorney. And it's not anything wrong with me asking for uh our current attorney to opine, and he opined, he opined accurately. And so I think we need to learn how to respect people, first of all. And and we need to respect our current city attorney. He answered the question. We need to learn how to listen to our applicant who said that he is not staying in the same space. And I also have a problem with a policymaker who has been working with the zoning ordinance for over a year and a half and don't even have a clue of what's in our zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Clerk, what's the motion? Is there a motion?
The motion is to approve. It was a motion by Councilmember Ral, seconded by Councilmember Gomes to approve U twenty dash zero zero three.
Let's vote, please.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Let's say yes.
Councilmember, I think you're muted, Council, Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Gilyard?
Abstaining.
Excuse me, stop. Why are you abstaining? What's your reason?
Because I'm conflicted.
Okay, we'll consider that as a reason. Go ahead.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid?
I am also abstaining.
Your reason?
I did not get a sufficient legal answer to my question.
Okay, thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Councilmember Baker?
Abstain.
And your reason?
Don't have one. It's a lot of stuff that's unclear. Lot more questions, but I don't want to belabor the process when I know that it's
There's a lot more questions you won't answer, right?
What I'm saying is I don't want to belabor the process and the votes have already passed.
Okay, uh, what's the vote, sir?
Uh, the vote is four zero three, three abstentions.
Okay.
And Mr. um, City Clerk, I just want to do a correction. Uh, it was seconded by Councilwoman Willis, not Gomes the first time.
Okay, Willis, okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim, I'm sorry.
All right, Mr. Clerk?
The next item is the item that was added to the agenda, which is executive session.
I'll get, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move that we go into executive session for real estate personnel and litigation.
Second.
Property moved the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Let's vote, please.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Pro Tim Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid?
Oh.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
That item is approved. You should receive your link.